Maggie?
Got it.
Nobody's calling me. You're here for a while, so nobody's calling me.
Roll call, Chairperson Summer?
Here.
Member Erdy?
Here.
And Member Cruzie?
Here.
All are here in the Capitol.
Everybody's got the agenda? Do you have a chance to look at this?
I'll take a second.
Main topics. Sheds. Crane.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I see.
The motion must've been carried then. And, I guess it's been two months ago of our last meeting. Maggie was kind enough to print out the minutes. And it was... Same sheds. I think our goal is to go through a lot of going... work in progress, but...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
My second one.
Motion's carried. Well, these correspondence we have is this.
Yep.
I don't got a chance to read yet. Might have to take a second. Can't get this from... Who's Amy Drake, Ken?
The old lady.
Resident? Okay. Basically, Ken just gave us to me, it's a village resident. Amy Drake just said she could be here, but wanted to have her input. Obviously, we didn't give copies for everybody. In a nutshell, I think she's saying she doesn't want shed ordinance.
We already have one.
Yeah. Do they say we need business other than what's been... I need you to bring it up. Nikki? Our old business is what we're bringing up tonight, correct?
Right.
In the previous meeting.
Yes.
Again, everybody knows while you're here, back in March, talked about the possibility of recommending a change to zoning regarding shed or accessory buildings. The reason being, someone brought that up. I guess I don't know the exact date, but probably months ago. And it never got actually addressed or put to bed, so... The planning commission agreed that we should have some public input. We didn't want to decide on what the village needed to do, just the three of us, so glad people are here. We would like to hear some public comment. Like to limit it to, you know, three to five minutes each. And if you'd like to comment, you're more than welcome. If I would of mine, just state your name before you say your face. Does anyone want to add to the... No?
I'll go first, yeah.
Okay.
My name is Ron Brewer. Now, nothing's been asked by sheds, just a discussion.
Just the same old going and...
We have the accessory building in place now. It's...
You have accessory building.
There is an accessory building section.
A copy of the current ordinance is on your agenda.
Yeah, I see that.
That's all we have.
But my biggest thing was limit the amount. You know, square footage by the building color is 200 square feet. So next we can go for a shed. But, you know, I see quite a few instances, there's been more than one, two or three sheds, which I... It all depends on the lot size. It gets to be appropriate if you're going to build something, if you need that many sheds, you ought to build a garage. And considering all the, I hear there's quite, well, it's quite a scrum problem in the village. You know, you take sheds or, you know, they don't have footing, so they're just receptive to rodents infiltrating into them and underneath them and everything else, so... But I think you've got a lot of lots that are small lots, and I think it ought to be a notice the size and amount of sheds growing lots.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to add? Just try it, Ken?
I have, I'm Brad Glasgow with Central Lake News. I have someone on my Facebook page is wanting to know why the changes to, why are the changes needed to these zoning ordinance?
Well, I think I just addressed that, that was brought up in a previous meeting, that, in fact, I think it was by Ron, that there was too many sheds. He was concerned about it. And we're not saying we are going to change it, that's why we're here.
Right.
It's due to, yeah, public input.
Okay.
In a nutshell. Anyone else? There was, I don't know if, this is for the public record, I assume that it was Amy. She wanted to inform the planning commission and the council that I do not believe it is necessary for there to be a shed ordinance. Basically, in the long story short, she's, she doesn't think we need one. And I guess maybe, you know, maybe my fault, I, you know, kind of categorized the thing as sheds, but it has to do with what's currently in place with accessory buildings. In my mind, it's the same thing. So you can call it accessory, shed, whatever you want to call it, but that's, that's, it's the same thing in my mind in a way. I think Ken has done some, basically some research with other villages.
It's all over the place.
Yeah.
It's whatever, you know.
I think we've been over the, either multiple buildings or square, the square footage thing right now basically falls under the maximum coverage of the lottery, right, Ken?
Thirty-five percent, yeah.
So there isn't anything specific on the number. No anything in place on, basically anything on buildings as far as how many is the amount of space. Thirty-five percent of that, it can cover. So... Again, we're just looking for public input. I'm not saying we're going to make any changes, but I think there's been some pro and some con, and we're not going to come to any sort of decision tonight, unless you guys are ready to, I'm certainly not.
Okay. So, so right now, if you had a 50 by 100 lot in town, how much of that could you cover with sheds?
Thirty-five percent.
Thirty-five percent of that lot could be individual sheds. One here, one there, one there, one there.
Thirty-five percent total.
They have to, they have to comply with the zoning. They do not need, you do not need a zoning permit
Correct.
to build an outbuilding.
If it's under 200 square feet, you build a garage.
Yeah. A shed, so to speak.
Well, I could build five sheds on a 50 by 100 lot. It, it, 150 square foot each shed.
But isn't it also dependent on if there's a house underneath?
That's going to be horrible. Yeah.
That's, that's the issue. You could cover 1,750 feet of your lot with roof, or that.
This is a park, this is the paved driveway considered a park.
And paved driveway, park, really, pretty much.
Of the, like, house.
Shed and water.
Right. House, shed, driveway, patio. Yeah, that's all included in that 35%.
The issue is, there's a lot of people that don't want to see a lot with five sheds on it. Like Ron said, if you have five sheds, maybe you should have one garage. That's horrible. So that's... And I, in my opinion, the only really true way to limit that is to limit the number of sheds.
And again, I'm glad you brought that up, a shed is anything 200 square feet or under.
I don't think we've defined a shed. That's when you build a zoning.
Or accessory building, I keep saying sheds.
Accessory building is any accessory structure. A shed, we do not, we do not define shed. Under 200 square feet doesn't need a zoning permit.
Okay.
Thought you did talk about a zoning permit for requirements from the side yard.
It has to comply with all the setbacks.
Right.
Yeah.
You just don't need the actual permit.
I was just going to say, kind of caveat to what you were saying there, but if somebody had the five sheds or wanted to put multiple structures or other type of, what we consider sheds, could they possibly put like a, like a, you know, ask the council, hey, I'd like to do this as my property, here's what I'd like to do, and kind of get it blessed off onto, if you guys do put in 35%?
It already is it.
The 35% is already there.
Thirty-five percent already is in there.
So they can't do any more than that anyways?
No, no more than 35% coverage.
That leaves a lot of area.
It leaves a lot of sheds you could, you know. If you have a 50 by 100 lot with a 1,200 square foot, how about you have another 550 feet? Take it all for the drive, when you start putting up 10 by 10 sheds, 100 square foot sheds.
We just, I think, we discussed this over a year ago with, there was, well, we closed here, but there was around whoever, I mean, we were talking about heights and, you know, if there's going to be a change, I guess, if there's going to be a change, and it needs to be fairly definitive on, you know, how high, how many, how, you know. Height, height is an issue, I think. I don't believe that there's anything in place now for height.
And not for sheds?
Not in accessory buildings, I don't believe.
There's a height requirement for the building, yes, it's probably certain, yes.
So not looking for two and three-story accessory buildings.
The first thing you probably do is define shed.
Well, I mean, in my mind, it falls under the accessory building, right, 3.03?
It does now, but if we want to start.
Or is that, is that, is that what we're talking, that's what I'm, I guess, referring to, we're talking to?
Right now, accessory sheds, anything that's not your residence, so a garage, detached garage is an accessory structure.
Okay.
I think the bigger concern more is that, sheds, we don't, that's the problem, we don't.
That's if the garage is under 200 square feet?
No, accessory structure is just any structure, accessory structure, any building or structure that is customarily incidental and subordinate to the use of the principal building or structure, including but not limited to accessory buildings, personal freestanding television, radio reception antennas, satellite dishes and signs. Basically, anything that's not.
How is it? Is that 3.03?
No, that's where we define accessory structure.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Well, that actually muddies the water a little bit, but that's, that's better bringing up now, I mean, if you have a whole separate ordinance.
For sheds, that's what I'm saying, if we want to do something with sheds, we should define what a shed is. And then with that.
Well, is our accessory building definition good in your, in your mind?
Accessory structure, I think that's fine, I don't like that feature.
Where is, is that?
Right on the edge.
Point one, definition.
We made a very good deal.
Do you have a definition from the research from other villages or areas?
About everyone you ask has something different, but I got 10 different answers from everyone. They just seem to do what fits the residents of their community.
That's the, that's the broadest brush definition you could have, right there.
Accessory structure. That's just that we won't, we won't define.
Ken, Mary Campbell have any ideas, or consultant? No?
She'd probably tell you what every other community has, which will be 10 different ones.
She doesn't say, this one's a really good one?
She might say this one was a really good one for Bel Air, this one was a really good one for Ann Arbor, or what we need is a really good one for Central.
Did you ever get any actual thing in writing from any other villages?
I got a lot of responses, we get an email, yeah.
I remember you doing the fence thing.
We got a couple of accessory buildings, too, and it was just.
All over the board?
All over, yeah.
I guess first off then, we need to decide if we make a recommendation even, have separate.
I believe ordinance for sheds. Or you can just limit the amount of accessory structures. It would serve the same purpose.
So you can put a whole new program in there?
We could just be. Part of zoning, men's zone. You, you, you could say you all have two accessory structures, which gives them a detached garage and a garden shed.
Okay, I was just going to ask whether the garage is attached or detached at that point. Well...
Oh, one way a garage would be defined differently, because it's got proper footings on it, you know.
Well, in this 3.0, or, excuse me, 3.3, it says a building may be connected to the principal building by a roof porch, breezeway or similar structure. So I guess in that respect, they're saying, they're not saying an attached garage, right, in 3.3? It's connected by a roof porch, breezeway or whatever. So connected garage to a house is not considered an accessory building, it's part of the house. Right?
No, I'd say garage. I did, it's very hard. Those accessory buildings may be connected to, to a principal building.
Yeah, by a roof porch, breezeway.
Or, that's the second part, or may be connected by roof porch, breezeway or similar structure. Or may be completely attached. When any accessory building is attached to a principal building, such accessory building shall be considered part of the principal building for purposes of determining yard dimensions.
Well, I think though, in the first, I mean, they're saying accessory buildings may be connected, or may be connected, so, we're really saying attached garages, an accessory building, I don't think that's...
Well, wouldn't it seem like if it's built into the house, like it's not a roof porch or a breezeway or anything, it's actually just, it's connected in with the building foundation? Wouldn't that consider just be a garage in itself, and then, yeah, if you have a 10-foot breezeway, then you're considering accessory?
Yeah, I mean, my, my opinion, food for thought at this point, as we strike that first, whatever this, letters out there, maybe. I don't think.
I don't think, I don't think a garage should be included in the whole situation, because a accessory building or storage building is not going to put a car, first of all. It's only 200 square feet. So a garage is a garage.
Well, that's, that's like, not in our zone.
That only has to do with the permit.
Only time 200 square, yeah. The only time 200 square feet comes in is that any structure under 200 square feet doesn't need a zoning permit.
No, well, yeah, according to the building department, it has to have proper footings in. If you're over 200 square feet. At 200 square feet, you can't hardly get a car in 200 square feet.
But the village's accessory building doesn't, doesn't define it.
Right, the building department says that you have to have proper footings, anything over 200 square feet. I don't know if you want to call that an accessory building or a storage or shed or what it is, but to me, it's more of a permanent structure.
I wouldn't consider a permanent structure and, as a shed, as a, you know, I, I would not. A permanent structure is a permanent structure, it's like your house, just like, there you go. I would not consider that a shed.
Full of metal.
Or an accessory building.
Attached garage, accessory building. That's just, I mean, I have.
I don't.
Other reason to say that, it was just my opinion.
Yeah, the sheds, you can pull them up on a trailer, take them, move them.
Yeah, they haul them in on a trailer, they haul them on on a trailer.
Yep.
Yeah, then it needs to be cleared out.
If I was going to limit the amount of sheds, I certainly wouldn't base it on whether they're setting on a footing or not, because if I wanted, then there'd be poor footing, and then you'd be right back in the same boat, right? You know what I'm saying? I think if you want, if you want with the amount of sheds, you can limit it, whether they're permanently attached or, that's just my opinion. You don't, you don't determine on how they're attached to the ground, or if they are.
Well, lot size comes into a big play, too. Fifty, sixty, 120 foot lots?
We got three sheds, but we got two lots.
The definition will really matter, too, because what about that structure behind Ray Hall's house on, in the tree house?
Tree stand.
Thing, stand? Is that a shed? Or accessory structure?
It's an accessory building, it's not attached to the primary structure. And according to the, what's in place now?
It's not touching the ground.
Is my kid's playhouse not such a shed? My kid's playhouse would count as a shed?
Or a shanny?
I don't know, we don't.
That's a good one, because that's, it's obviously mobile office here, but it's.
You don't really use it in the off-season, but you have to have some place to put it.
How you look at it that close, that one, all the trees, it got legs hanging down to the ground?
Like.
So you can always, you could always box that in down bottom, and it could be used like a real shed.
Yeah.
But then they're talking about putting a limit on it.
Yeah.
Thirty-five percent.
Sure.
Well, this is going to.
No, you definitely want a height thing, when you get anywhere near the lake and stuff.
That complicated.
Black people fuse.
Couple meetings, a little more research, I'd like to see if you still have, Ken, the.
I'll ask, we're not there again, that we want to move.
Something to compare to.
They take a couple days, put them back.
And maybe, again, big maybe, but maybe we need to change our accessory building verbiage and put in a shed, or, or no shed, just have, I mean, those are things we need to, I guess, decide, right? I don't like to, the goal here, in my opinion, is not to have a 500-page zoning ordinance, right?
Right.
Right. We'll put it in a public hearing, I guess we'll make what we want.
Yeah.
Have a public hearing, move on.
Yep, maybe we can move on from here.
Yep.
I'd like to, if, if you're willing to volunteer to get that information again.
I'll give more, I'll give Mary Campbell a call.
I think we need something to compare against. This is.
Well, I think what we want to do, we want to limit the number of sheds on a piece of property, right?
Right.
Is that our goal?
I think that's the concern, if we're going to address.
We need a, we need a goal, I think, we're going to be back here again next month with the same thing. I think by next month, we should have something written up, where we can have a public hearing on the new forward.
At the next meeting?
I, I really do. I think we'll find something, we'll get it written, we'll... It's going to be another month away, maybe next month we can prove it, and then call for a public hearing on it? Or if we feel comfortable by next month, we'll have a hearing next month? We have to have a public hearing.
Right, right, right.
On, on what we propose, we have to have a proposal.
I agree.
I think we can make it, hopefully happen by next month, because we can have the best of public hearing. Let's make it together.
June. We'll have to have something in writing before the public.
Before the meeting.
So we're going to have, put that together in June and have the public hearing in July?
By June, we'll be done with this, this is going on for a year.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
I really would. Well, can we do that collectively without having a meeting?
We, we want to limit sheds, I guess, right?
Yeah, I think shed is defined, as defined by, as defined by anything 200 square feet under. That's not anything that, you know.
I, I, once again, I wouldn't put aside them, because then somebody's going to tell them 190 feet, have them all over their lot again. I just think if you want to limit the number of little sheds you see on a piece of property, the only way to truly do it is limit the number of little sheds you see on a piece of property. I, I really don't have a way to do it, other than say.
Like say if, if Ron's correct, if you're saying over 200 square feet, you got to give a building permit, footings, then that's not a shed, right, or is it?
It can be.
Well, the whole point is, do you still want to see them or not, that's what I'm saying.
Well, it's more, what do you want to call it, it's more of a structure, for this, you know, to me, a shed or storage building is not a permanent structure, where if you could, a building permit property build it, it's a permanent structure. Like they're saying, a shed, you can put it on a creative movement. No, thank.
I personally would really like to see someone else's.
I'll give them, you, you won't see one that says what you want to say.
No, no, but.
You'll be right back here making it again.
But if you, well, yeah, we're going to have to make up our own, I'm not, we're not, there's no plagiarize someone else's, but if we can pick the good pieces out, or what looks good, and then, next meeting, let's actually say, okay, this is what we're, the shed is, and this is how many we're going to have, have a public hearing July. Move on from there, because I just don't, I'm not personally, I'm not ready to limit the number and square footage and all that stuff right now, I need more information personally. I'm not really comfortable. Myself, how do you feel, Nikki?
I just want to know, you know, like they're saying, they're, you know, they're saying now stuff about, you know, shannys and stuff. That's not a shed, that's a shanny, that.
That's what I mean, now, if we're going to do it, I want to make sure, if we're going to do anything, we do it right.
And they like a permanent structure, they can go, how many stories can a permanent structure go? That's just a difference.
Yeah, but the whole issue that's been brought to us is sheds and shannys, I mean, that, that's what it is. That, that's what people complain about, 200 square, scattered around on people's lots.
Right.
That is what we're addressing.
The problem is, we really don't have a definition of a shed.
We have to get technically a definition.
Right.
Why a shed?
So I have no problem making the decisions, as long as we, okay, what is a shed? Then we can say, oh, yeah, you can have two of them, but we have to have some sort of a definition for shed or storage building, or outbuilding, or whatever we're going to call it. So, I need more information. I mean, we need to, I don't think we need to go measure sheds the whole people, do you?
I think we're going to make what we want, that fits the village and move on.
The Home Depot sheds and Lowe's sheds, they come in different sizes, I mean, you don't have this, this, they have the big one, because we have a friend that has a shed that he can park his razor in. We have a shed that's smaller that we can't even park a car in. So, I mean, they go from big to little.
Yeah. Okay. Well, again, we're going to count on Ken to get us the information.
Can you fix it?
Well, Home Depot laws, find out what they call them.
Your insurance company. Home Depot is only where from eight by eight to. Eight hundred something square feet. Fourteen by sixteen, you know. Shed. Or something, you're allowed two.
Two hundred square feet.
Whatever, I mean, once you make the garage, we'll take a little bit.
That, well, I'm just.
If you say 200 square feet, that'd be 150. Just want to have my shed, my shed. Any minute smaller than this, we're going to consider sheds. We would be able to walk around it.
And 199 or 200 square feet is still a shed.
A lot being over, a lot of times, a lot of needs for sheds and storage.
Should be this length, that's the smallest you should. Lawn mower, riding lawnmower. A shed. A forty or not.
Shed is the order of, whatever.
I got another one, one of mine, I gotta take the roof off, put in a shingle, plate it on. You know what I'm saying? That's the whole intent of this, I think, lots aren't filled up with four or five different buildings.
Right.
So if you need, add on your garage, if you want a permit structure, you know what I'm saying, there's lots of solutions.
I mean, because attached garage is part of it.
Nobody's complaining about attached garage, they're complaining about the sheds that sit on the lots.
But again, I think we have to have a specific definition for shed. You know, that's going to make sense, that people understand, okay, this is it.
We're going to have to get a hold of a scholar and find out what it's, so Maggie, get on, Steve.
I'm just saying.
By educated.
Somebody's got a nice shanny in their yard, and they're going to say, well, this is a shed.
No, as I said, we say any structure under somebody's square feet, period, you know what I mean? A lot of people use their shannys in the summertime, I mean, in the summertime, they got a full, full set.
That would limit you going up, too, because that's included, if you have two stories. It's more square feet, square feet, square feet.
Okay, what we think the smallest. So pick what we think the smallest one could be, and say anything smaller than that, there's a lot of extra structure, smaller than that.
Well, ten by twenty, I guess you could get a car in, right, technically?
Yeah. Well, if you could get out of it.
That's gonna be your...
What size are your garages in your contest? Do you remember?
Twenty-six by twenty-four or something, yeah.
That's big enough to walk around and have a few, you know, your car or a few things.
Got some tractor, soap, soap plow, a lot more in there.
You see what other people do? Well, donor department does come into play somewhat, because like saying anything over two hundred square foot, you gotta pull a permit, right? And put a foundation in, is that?
Yeah, then you got something permanent that way, you know?
But that's the building department's, Ryan is saying is two hundred square feet. So are we gonna, is that our line? Two hundred square feet?
Let's see what the bill, let's get something from writing from the building department, we'll move forward.
Okay.
So we have it ready.
Okay, you're gonna get that too? I'll get that.
You get that? It doesn't matter, I was just being quiet for a minute, procrastinating.
We're procrastinating.
Hey, while you're down in Pemberton Hills, you can check on Pemberton, okay?
I was just down there two weeks ago, right?
Well, you could check on the sheds.
Didn't have time to ask him.
Check on the sheds on there.
Not to diminish Mr. Brewer's complaint, but have you had more than one complaint about the number of sheds?
I, I don't recall any more. Just, Ken's right, it's just been going on for longer than it should have been, actually.
I mean, you guys have been discussing it over a year, you said.
I, I, that's probably been over a year, hasn't it, Ken?
Mm-hmm.
It's been a little bit.
Yeah.
We really have to do something, we have to put it to rest.
Yeah, put it to bed.
So I'll tell since I'm up the M and L.
I'll get ahold of the building department.
How people deal with accessory structure, sheds. I'll call Mary Campbell.
Okay.
It's called the building department.
Well, I would say at the next meeting, we'll make some definitions, and we need to decide if we're gonna push a recommendation to the council, right?
After, to a public hearing?
After, yeah, after the public hearing.
I have a move forward.
Mm-hmm. Okay. You guys have any other business?
I adjourn it. I adjourn you.
Make the motion.
I motion to adjourn.